All right, good evening. We're back after our closed session, a little bit tardy, apologize for that. And our clerk will read out any actions taken in closed session.
No actions.
Put your mic on, please, Madam Clerk.
No actions taken in closed session.
All right, very good. So, our invocation tonight will be led by Trustee Bill Jay. Please rise and stay standing for the pledge to be led by Trustee David Lang.
Please join me in a moment of silence for the 38 citizens that were unfortunately killed in the hurricane in the eastern part of this country over the last few days, as well as the 400,000 people without power, uh, four million people without power as of this morning, and the, uh, the hundreds of thousands who are out of their homes. A moment of silence, please.
All right, Trustee Lang.
Please join me as we salute the flag to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and you may have noticed, we're missing our chancellor tonight, who had a family, urgent family matter, so Vice Chancellor David McGay is sitting in him, his place, as acting chancellor tonight. And we have some resolutions to present tonight. The Model Classified Senate Award, Irvine Valley College President Glenn Rockmore, would you like to come to the podium? And you usually go down. I'll, I'll, I'll read. All right, well, let's see if we have someone to receive the award. You have to go get your picture scanned, right? All right. And our, our acting chancellor will also assist.
Could I, could I also have our past president and our
Sure.
G Dixon and Angela Mahaney also come up?
Absolutely.
They're also responsible.
Absolutely. Please, please come to the podium, thank you. All right, we need to have everyone kind of stand close for photo ops, so if you can all get together. And now, Trustee Melchecker, will you read the resolution?
I'd be delighted to. This is the Irvine Valley College Model Classified Senate Award for 2011. Whereas, the Irvine Valley College Classified Senate was selected as a model classified senate and recognized with an award as an exemplary organization at the Classified Institute, Leadership Institute in Ventura, California on June 24th, 2011. And whereas, a model classified senate is a participatory governing body elected by its constituents, which encourages a cooperative working and professional relationship with collective bargaining units, encourages staff leaders to become stronger, and offers reference and experience for novice organizations and those seeking organizational revitalization. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate the 2011, in 2010, 2011 Irvine Valley College Classified Senate Board of Officers, Angela Mahaney, Dennis Gordon, Diana Walker, Jo San Juan, and G Dixon, for their outstanding service to and excellent representation of Irvine Valley College classified staff, and their leadership in making the Irvine Valley College Classified Senate a model organization within the California Community College System.
Would you read the roll? Call the roll for the vote, please. Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Mel Dow.
Aye.
Trustee Melchecker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
All right. Okay, and our photo op. All right, very good, congratulations. And our next resolution is also Irvine Valley College, the Classified Senate Vision Award. Would you like to call forth the people who will help you accept that? Laura Yuren. And could you introduce the person who's going to accept it?
Yes, this is Laura Yuren, that's who the resolution is about, and you'll hear about it in one second.
All right, very good, all right.
This is the Irvine Valley College Classified Senate Vision Award for 2011. Whereas Laura Yuren, Career Placement Officer at Irvine Valley College, was recognized with the California Community College Classified Senate Vision Award at the Classified Leadership Institute in Ventura, California on June 24th, 2011. And whereas Laura Yuren was honored for her exemplary service to Irvine Valley College Classified Senate, beginning in 1989, when she was Classified Senate President, implementing a new constitution and bylaws which resulted in staff participation in the shared governance at IVC, and brought the first statewide classified senate to life, resulting in what is now known as the State Classified Senate, or 4CS. And therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Laura Yuren for her outstanding service to and excellent representation of classified staff at our district and across the California Community College System.
All right, Ms. Garcia, would you call the roll, please? Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Mel Dow.
Aye.
Trustee Melchecker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations. All right, wonderful, congratulations. All right, and
I'm very impressed that Mr. Ren even brought her on sharing section.
I know, that's wonderful.
Would you like to introduce the people you brought?
Would you like to introduce your family who's here, Mr. Ren?
Hi. Uh-huh. Wonderful, thank you. All right, and the next award is the District Sherpa Technical Development Team, and our
acting chancellor will be the one to present this award, okay? And if they would come forth, we'll have them be introduced before we read the resolution.
Whole IT team, wonderful.
It is, like our whole IT team. So, could we have our vice chancellor introduce us?
I want to call up Jim Gaston, who's the project manager, and let him introduce the team.
All right.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate from the board not just the, the resolution today, but really your support for the technology projects we have at this district. We're really excited about this project. I really consider myself fortunate to stand among such a fine collection of geeks, you will, which of course is the highest form of compliment in, in my world, so. But we're also pleased, not just by the technical development team here, we also have another team, the Sherpa Design Team, and that is comprised of faculty, staff, administrators, and, and most importantly, students. And they set the priorities, review the work that we've done. This award was for a very specific technical achievement that the team accomplished, but we're equally proud of the entire team who's helping set these priorities, so, thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Okay, and you're going to introduce the people standing behind you?
Oh, absolutely. So, we have Chris Davis, who's a programmer, Alan Kwan, who's a database administrator, Christian Hira, who's a database administrator, Kurt Daddel is a business analyst and project manager, Robert McCray, who's a QA analyst, Jason Young is a programmer, he couldn't make it, David Barkle is a system architect, he couldn't make it, and Josephine Boulain is a computer programmer in our department, she was sick and unable to make it, so.
Very good, quite impressive with all those names. All right, we'll now read the resolution, Madam Clerk.
This is the Sherpa Technical Development Award for the 2011 Blackboard Catalyst Award winner. Whereas, the district's information technology Sherpa Technical Development Team was recognized with the 2011 Blackboard Catalyst Committee's Choice Award at the Blackboard World Conference on July 15th, 2011, a prestigious award afforded to a select group of worldwide e-learning professionals, system administrators, and institutions whose work is recognized as significant and exemplary. And whereas, the Sherpa Technical Development Team was specifically honored for its development of a unique notification system that supports student success via individualized, event-triggered reminders, and communicates with students using email, text messaging, and voice calls. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate the entire Sherpa Product Development Team for their extraordinary initiatives to improve the student learning experience, and the Technical Development Team for its well-deserved recognition as the 2011 Blackboard Catalyst Award winner.
Okay, Ms. Garcia, please read the roll. Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Mel Dow.
Aye.
Trustee Melchecker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations. You're gonna have to probably double-deck that, it's a pretty big group. There you go. All right, thank you, congratulations again. All right, and with that, we will move to public comments, and we have, hmm, let's see, one person wishing to make a public comment, Evan Long, Mr. Long, or Ms. Long, I'm so sorry.
It's Erin Long.
Erin, I'm sorry, I couldn't read that, it looked like a V, your R did.
Yeah, my Rs aren't very good.
Okay.
I type more than I write, so.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me address you this evening. I'm up here to talk to you about catastrophic leave. It's a part of the board policy I feel like should be looked at. My boss, my boss's son recently was diagnosed with brain cancer, and during that time, I, I think everyone would agree that it shouldn't be a time to worry about whether or not you can pay your bills. So, many of the administrators and staff and faculty at Saddleback College have been wanting to donate their time that they have to her, to get her through the year, hopefully, as he's undergoing chemo right now. But unfortunately, as part of the board policy, faculty and staff can't donate time to a classified manager, so, I really think, I, I know it was brought up to the BP and AR Committee, I don't know officially yet, but when it does come up, if it does come up, it would be really great if, that would be a consideration that you guys made, that anybody can donate time to anyone, and there's some kind of formula that could take place where it would equate correctly, and there's not overpayment or underpayment or whatnot, so, I just wanted to ask you guys to consider that.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. And we will now move to reports, and board reports, we'll start with Trustee Jay.
I'm sorry, but you missed calling me, my name is Catherine Doe.
I notified the board earlier, and I'm here to give you a legal advisory that I have tried
for 30 years to access this campus with my disability. I'm 65 years old, I was applying for the chancellor's job, I would have had it if I had had access, and I would like to arrange a meeting to discuss it with the attorneys for the school, thank you.
Ms. Doe, you did not put in a request to speak, which is why you weren't recognized. We didn't, where is it? I don't see it. Do you have it, Ms. Garcia? Thank you. It's not here. Thank you very much, Ms. Doe. All right, and going on, then, Trustee Jay, your report, please.
Yes, as usual, I'm looking forward to see the enrollment figures, since I had to drive around for 10 minutes to find his face tonight. And, so I'm looking forward to that sometime this evening, that we hear the enrollment figures. Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Mel Dow.
Several of the board members and I just took a very interesting tour of the new renovation for the library here at Saddleback. We are just really excited, it is a beautiful building, it's going to be so much fun and helpful to students, and we're just really proud of our new building that's going to be online, not too distant future. Two other things I'd like to bring up, I'd like everybody to know that I do have my tickets for the Chili Bowl Cook-Off, and I'm looking forward to that, that's for a great cause, and that's coming up. And also, I'm going to be at the IVC Art Gallery opening reception, and I look forward to that also. So, there's a lot of things going on. A couple Fridays ago, I spent several hours just wandering around the campus. Again, I continue to be impressed with the quality of people that we have here. I was welcomed everywhere I went, people asked me if they could help me, I guess I looked like I was wandering around, not knowing where I was, and a number of people came up to me and offered to help me, and I think that shows the quality of people and programs that we have here in, in the South Orange County Community College District. Thank you.
What we need to know is, are you going to bring your own chili recipe?
I'm sure.
Are you submitting your own chili recipe at the Chili Cook-Off?
No.
No.
All right, Trustee Melchecker.
I just wanted to echo what Trustee Mel Dow said. We'll, we'll both see each other, and any one of you who come to the Chili Cook-Off and to the IVC Art Opening at Irvine Valley College, I, I, first, I wanted to let everyone know that I attended, with most of the board members, the chancellor's opening session for, for in-service, or flex week, as they call it, and to welcome all the faculty back and to start off the semester right, and I attended a number of, of the events on both campuses, and was really delighted to see everyone off to a great start this year, and looks like people are working hard, and I also registered for four classes, and everyone at the administration and at the registration, A and R, and at all those, all those areas were just so welcoming and wonderful and helpful, that I know they gave our students a really good welcome into our campus, and I felt really good about that. I wanted to mention a little more about the Cook-Off, because I did a lot of promoting of it last year, and attended it last year, and I have flyers here, I don't know if they can get a picture of it, that I was gonna hand out to everyone. It's actually Thursday, September 8th, and it's 4:00 to 8:00 PM in the Fine Arts Quad, and it's $30 per person, and that includes you to be, be able to pick out one of the bowls made by students in our ceramics department, and they're beautiful, and fill it, I think, as many times as you want with chili, and eat the chili and take the bowl home. Also, they have work of arts, different ceramic work by local artists in Laguna Beach, and our local faculty, and really, really, I had some inside person telling me which are the most important things to buy, so, I spent quite a bit of money last year buying ceramics that really are all over my house, that I really love. And the money is going to go to our wonderful Veterans Memorial, which is right out here, and it's beautiful to see in, in the day, and it's even more beautiful to see at night when it's lit up. And also, the extra money is going to veterans and their families, and to help them in, in this time, so, it's, it's a wonderful cause, all the money is going directly to that, so.
Thank you, Trustee Melchecker, your time is up. Trustee Prendergast.
Just again, the library tour was, was impressive. I don't have the context of knowing what it looked like before, but you can kind of see some of the old building there, and they're trying to preserve that, and it's kind of interesting. I do also want to comment, the chancellor's opening session, my first one, was, was, was interesting, and I actually didn't fall asleep, so, good job, all those that put it together. I, I did want to mention that after that, we went to the Faculty Association Luncheon, I really wanted to make it to the classified luncheon as well, but my wife's honey-do list only allowed me one day off during the week, and I regret that, but I heard it was nice as well. I did also get a chance to go by the, the aquatics complex and see that it came out very, very nicely. It was, it was very impressive, the work they've done there, so, I'm looking forward to attend some, some girls and boys water polo games this, this fall.
Great, thank you very much. And I'll give a report, brief report, I was at the chancellor's opening session, and very pleased and proud to participate in that program, and also the Faculty Association Luncheon that followed that. In addition, I went to the Orange County Legislative Task Force, and it was an interesting session to try to redefine our mission, there was an outside facilitator, and I think we did a pretty good job, so, we'll be looking forward to that group moving, moving forward. I will be at Laguna Woods TV on Wednesday morning to report on this meeting. So, we'll move on now to Trustee Dave Lang.
Well, I regretted
Could you put, please push your mic, and move your mic towards your mouth, thank you.
I regretted not being in town this year for the chancellor's opening session, or for the colleges in service. Fortunately, it intersected with our vacation plans, which included my wife's attending IFLA, International Federation of Library Associations, so it was quite appropriate to do the library tour tonight, and see what the facility here will look like at Saddleback College, and I also appreciate all of the, the folks that guided us in that tour, and it is going to be quite a facility, I think, when we finally have it completed. I certainly, however, could have done without Hurricane Irene, which hit very close to the small B and B that we were staying at, near the rainforest in Puerto Rico, which is where we were at, the last two days of our visit there, it was much more exciting than I would have liked, but it's, it's very good to be back home, and just wanted to extend my warm greetings and welcome, and good luck to everybody as we start the fall semester. Thank you.
Student trustee Larson.
Well, I went to the student trustee workshop that I informed you last meeting. I met some great characters, there's a lot of, uh, smart individuals, very inspiring to meet them up there. And I'd also like to thank Terry Flugman and Bill O'Mary, the photographer, he's, they helped me tremendously, I wouldn't have been able to do it without them. Secondly, I went on the library tour, it was nice to see the new style, it's definitely an improvement. It was the first week of school last week, and I don't have my books yet, because the library's so, or the bookstore's so crammed, so it was very helpful, the LAP services and the library, the temporary library. I want to echo how everyone was so friendly. And finally, I was on the water polo team a couple years ago, and I'm very interested in the alumni game, so, I'll be able to swim in the new aquatic complex, I'm super stoked, and I'll see what the new freshmen have to offer this year. And that is my report.
Thank you very much. And our acting chancellor, McGay, do you have a report?
I don't have a report, I have a comment. The best part of my day just took place at the resolution time. We're not a perfect district, and I won't say that we don't have any flaws, but the truth of the matter is, we do a lot of things really well. It was so good, it just happened to be IVC's night tonight, Saddleback has been up there with excellence a lot of times, and, and our district services, so I'm just kind of proud of where I work.
Thank you. All right, do we have any board requests for reports? Seeing none, we will now move to our consent calendar, we, well, actually, before that, we're going to pull item 5.8 from the consent calendar, and we're going to advance item 7.3 before we get to the consent calendar. So that is the district-wide strategic plan, and we have a presentation tonight on that. Who's going to do that?
With that, I'd like to ask our presidents, as well as Lisa Davis Ellison, Ellen, I always mess her name up consistently, and Bob Cosgrove to step to the podium.
So if you would, if you have your agenda in front of you, turn to 7.3 at this time, and I believe we'll have a PowerPoint to go with that.
I'll have to take the chance to introduce this group. Glenn, if you could open up the PowerPoint presentation on the screen there?
Yeah. There we go.
And then if we could go to slide number two on this one, you'll see a list of all the people that have been involved in the district-wide strategic plan.
Would you go to slide two? Thank you. There we go.
You'll see that, that this plan you're about to see has been created by a vast number of people from Saddleback College, District Services, and Irvine Valley College, and it's been a very short time period. The bulk of this plan was developed over the summertime, and so, people have been busy, and you'll see some of the contents here, and I'd like to have our presidents introduce the two different faculty members that'll be doing the presentation tonight. So, Dr. Rockmore.
Yes, and also, just as a reminder, that this work is a response to, and accreditation recommendation, and I realize that our chancellor's not here tonight, but he certainly deserves a great deal of credit for taking this recommendation seriously, and pulling together the, the team that you see before you here on the list, not, not here right now, but it has been a very open and collegial process that we've undertaken in a relatively short period of time, and I think it's been highly successful. So I believe tonight's presentation is divided into two parts. We have our academic senate president, Lisa Davis Allen, and we also have, from Saddleback, we have Bob Cosgrove, who's going to present the second portion of that.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. I am pleased to have the opportunity to help in this presentation, it's a lot of hard work by a large team that was made up of faculty, staff, classified staff, classified managers, administrators, not only in both colleges, but at district services as well. It was a pleasure to do the work, and a really good collegial experience. We'd like to just kind of set the stage and give you a context in which to think about the district goals that were developed, obviously with the ACC JC letter, out of the six district recommendations, district recommendation number one specifically spoke to the need for a district-level strategic plan. Their writing was that the teams recommend that the chancellor develop and implement both a strategic short-term and long-term plan that is inclusive of the planning at the colleges, and that this planning structure drive the allocation of district resources for the colleges, the Advanced Technology Education Park, and the district, and of course, we've cited the standard 1B4 that they related to that. Before we go into the goals, and I'll walk through the first three with you, and then Professor Cosgrove will walk through the final three with you, we just thought it would be nice to kind of define the goal as we think about them institutionally. Generally, we think of a goal as an overarching concept used as a conceptual tool to help determine and evaluate policy and practice. Now, although that's, that's more nebulous in many ways, and certainly broader in its scope, the way that we move toward the accomplishment of these goals is through a series of objectives, and the objectives are, are something very different. We, we tend to use what we call the SMART criteria for determining those goals, and the SMART reflects the specific criteria, they must be measurable, certainly achievable, realistic, and of course, time-related. So to begin to go through the development of the district-wide strategic plan, we begin with plan organization, and what developed out of a number of meetings, as well as two retreats, was a series of six district-wide goals, 13 district-wide objectives that relate to those six strategic goals, and 73 district-wide action plans. I'm sure you'll be glad I'm not going to read you the 73 action plans, but we will walk you through the goals and objectives, and of course, if you want the specifics on the action plan, those can certainly be made available. District-wide goal number one, the South Orange County Community College District will create a district-wide culture which is characterized by mutual respect and collaboration, and which celebrates the uniqueness of each institution. To this first goal, we have developed and attached currently two objectives. The first objective is that the South Orange County Community College District Chancellor will take the actions necessary to assure that employees district-wide collaborate on the achievement of common educational benchmarks. on the achievement of common educational benchmarks. And the second objective for district-wide goal number one is that the South Orange County Community College District Chancellor will periodically communicate directly to employees district-wide. Both of these objectives, through their action plans, are very measurable, timely, and certainly achievable. To move on to district-wide goal number two, it states that the South Orange County Community College District will support innovations that result in quantifiable improvement in student preparedness and success, and will facilitate the institutionalization of those innovations across the district. Currently, we have one objective that is attached to goal number two, and it is that the South Orange County Community College District will increase the rates of completion for degrees, certificates, and transfer readiness by 5% annually. District-wide goal number three. The South Orange County Community College District will maintain its technological leadership, and I think we can see that with this evening's awards, and will make future advancements which enhance student access and success. We have developed currently one objective attached to district-wide goal number three, and that is that the South Orange County Community College District will articulate its vision for future innovations in an annually updated district technology plan, which will be collaboratively developed, widely distributed, and implemented according to defined priorities. So now I'm going to turn this over to Professor Cosgrove to walk you through the final district-wide goals. And I think I stole some of your thunder because I just kept raving like a good professor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Bob Cosgrove, president-elect of the academic senate at Saddleback and a professor of English. We have, over the last decade, helped ACCJC become a cottage industry and have kept a lot of them employed, and we'd like to get off of that list at some point, and I hope it's this year. The Board of Trustees is instrumental in helping us to accomplish what you are seeing here on the objectives and the goals. And so it's important for you to be informed and to ask questions and to support, I hope, the work of the chancellor and of this district. Goal number four. The South Orange County Community College District will increase the effective use of resources by developing and implementing a cycle of integrated district-wide planning. ACCJC and WAS teams that have come down here have helped us, and other districts as well, to identify problems because they're external auditors, applying rules that have been imposed on them by the federal government in terms of education. And while we may not like it, and maybe we sometimes will disagree with some of these issues, nonetheless, what we have seen in the last several weeks, several months, is an awareness that this college, these colleges, and the district are not separate entities, but really interlocking entities, and that we need to rethink, as the chancellor has been trying to do, the way we see ourselves. And ACCJC has helped us to go in that direction. Two of the objectives, or three of the objectives you find on the first slide here. We will develop and implement a model for a cycle of district-wide long-term and short-term planning, including a process for district service administrative unit review. This has been sporadically done in the past and has not been taken, sometimes, I think, as seriously as we are now looking at it. 4.2, we'll review and revise the resource allocation process to ensure that expenditures are linked to planning priorities. And again, this has been a point of contention in this district for a long time. It is certainly becoming much clearer as to the role of basic aid monies and the allocation of those monies based on good planning. 4.3, we'll prepare and distribute an annual report that outlines the progress on district-wide goals. And it is important, again, that this be factually done. When we have, unfortunately, a paucity, a limited number of facts, we suddenly have lots of experts appear with all sorts of theories about those limited facts. So we want to base everything that we're doing on evidence. Goal five, district-wide. The South Orange County Community College will develop, document, and implement data-driven district decision-making processes that are collaborative, transparent, efficient, and effective. And a manual is in process of being developed now. It'll obviously be refined as time goes on, as we see what works and doesn't work. But it is important that we've taken these steps, and they are in good hands and being developed as we work here this semester. 5.2, the district will annually assess its decision-making process with an eye toward continual improvement. Sounds good, difficult oftentimes to implement, however. And finally, the last goal that we have identified, that the South Orange County Community College will assess the educational needs of the communities within the district boundaries and pursue joint venture partnerships with educational institutions and business and industry. This is particularly directed toward ATEP, a piece of land that we have that needs to be developed, is being developed, obviously in a recession. We find it more difficult to find partners that will work with us or will be able to work with us, but it is our job to go out and do just that. So on 6.1, the chancellor and college presidents will collaborate to determine responsibility for use and maintenance of advanced technology in the education park. Goal, objective 6.2, chancellor and college presidents will collaborative, will collaborate to develop a three-to-five-year development plan for maintenance and use of advanced technology and education park. 6.3, the district will include an analysis of external scans, data, in the annual progress report on the South Orange County Community College Strategic Plan 2011 to 14, and will adjust next year's steps accordingly. And finally, 6.4, the district will determine college service areas within the larger district Finally, you have a visual here that is an attempt to give, in an overly simplified way, the steps that we've taken in this first year, and going into year two, reassess, and then finally, certainly in year three, assess again how the goals and objectives are lining up, which ones need to be changed, and which ones can be continued. The final visual is, you see that the two circles to the left have been combined and are moved into the District-wide Planning Council, which is an offshoot of the accreditation report and the reason why we're giving this report. We want to make certain that we keep an eye to accreditation because we have a midterm report now required of all schools, no matter whether you're not on a watch or probation and have a clean bill of health. And it's probably a good idea simply because six years span between two accreditation cycles, we forget a lot. So we don't know exactly what will be in the report. Don Boucher and I are going up to a meeting in September, and we think we'll hear some information about what to begin planning. And we would like to have any information from the community, people here, people listening to this, by September 15, to either the college presidents or the vice chancellor. And again, it's important to all of us participate. This is our college district. The students that we serve are from our communities. A quotation that I thought appropriate to this particular presentation, and as a closing remark, is by George Bernard Shaw, who said, "The single biggest problem in communication is the illusion that it has taken place." We don't want to make this a kind of magic trick that we have written a report to satisfy only the needs of the ACCJC, but to really take this to heart and to make this district a better place. And again, it's an educational facility, but it's also a business, and we need to run it as a business efficiently, effectively, and collaboratively. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is an information item only, and we certainly do appreciate all the hard work of everyone who participated in this, and we'll be looking forward to the progress of it. Thank you so much. We'll now move back to the consent calendar. And pardon me? Oh, one comment. Yes, our acting chancellor would like to comment.
On this report, you'll see a lot of hard work was done in the process of it, but also, one of the things that the chancellor emphasized to me specifically was, when we developed this plan, we employed the uses as consultants. And the consultants went around, they interviewed well over 20 people throughout the entire district at both colleges and district services. One of the comments that we had was the fact that we don't always have a positive culture of discussions between the colleges or the district services. The chancellor wanted me to be very specific and tell everybody that he has been working hard with our two presidents, and in essence, the presidents have agreed that they would work to eliminate criticism and leading by example between the colleges so that we can start focusing more on having a positive environment throughout the district. And I think, and he felt that would go a long way. So I want to congratulate the chancellor and the presidents for working on that. That's certainly a big issue, and we're glad we're addressing that as well. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, back to the consent calendar, and keeping in mind that item 5.8 is pulled. Do I have any other items that would, any trustees would like to separate before we vote on the entire consent calendar? Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, 5.12.
You want to pull 5.12? Anything else? There's, sorry. All right. There's been a motion to move approval of the consent calendar with the exception-- excuse me-- with the exception of 5.8 and 5.12. And it was seconded by, I believe, trustee J. Trustee Lang made the motion. All in favor of approving, please vote with your computer button. Thank you. All right. The motion is approved unanimously with one absent vote and one student advisory vote. And now we'll go to item 5.12, pulled by trustee Prendergast. Do you want to comment on that, trustee Prendergast?
Yeah, I just want to know what the reason is why all of a sudden, somebody else gets to get more money.
Would you like to--
I mean, did their services increase in some way? Or do we have--
This is a revised contract with our council, Atkinson, Adelson, Loy, and Romo. Do you want to comment on that, vice chancellor or acting chancellor Bouquet?
With this, in essence, they review their rates annually, and this year, they've asked to have an increase of $5 per hour for each different group of attorneys that we employ.
They've asked for it, but--
You can vote for it or against it.
It is a, it comes as recommendation to the board. We've used them, and I've been very pleased with their services, not just this year, but over the past history with them.
Any other questions from trustees? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve this item? Trustee Lang, second.
Second.
Trustee Meldell. All right. Let's vote, please. Okay. The matter is approved unanimously with one absent and one student advisory vote. All right. Very good. Thank you. We are now on our general action items. 6.1, and this is the final budgets for our two ASG representatives from Saddleback College as well as IVC. So let's start out with, let's see, Saddleback? How's that? Okay. Wrong. Line. Okay, there we go.
I'd like to move the budget.
Okay. There's been a motion, and he's going to make a presentation. Do we have a second to trustee J.'s motion?
I'll second.
All right. Second by trustee Prendergast. Go ahead. Our student trustee Haseen will present this. I'm sorry, not student trustee. You are the president of the ASG for Saddleback. Sorry.
Okay. So, thank you for having me here tonight again, Honorable Board of Trustees, and good evening to all of you. As President Padberg just said, my name is Joseph Haseen. I'm the ASG president for Saddleback College. I was able to present our tentative budget to the board in June, and tonight, I'm here to present our final budget.
Okay.
So basically, I'll go over the main things that I've changed. The two things to look at are the allocation of our over $100,000 in scholarships and the allocation of our beginning fund balance of $210,776. Basically, we had the task of allocating the originally funded $100,000 number in scholarships. We had then had to decide exactly towards which projects this money would be going. We continued to contribute to the foundation scholarship program with a contribution of $56,000, continued support for our ASG book loan program, and also began funding for a new scholarship program for high school students, as well as support for the Child Development Center with scholarships totaling $20,000. And as for allocating the beginning fund balance, basically, this is the rollover fund that we discussed at the last meeting. Originally allocated was $20,000, and then, if you take $210,776, subtract 20, that's the new allocation that's in our budget now. And in allocating this fund, we continued support for our co-curricular programs and also fielded requests for new programs. So we sent out to all the divisions that we were looking for requests for new funding, and a few divisions did step forward with new programs and ideas, including new support for the honors program and support for a few different events brought forward by the Advanced Technology and Applied Sciences Division. Okay, so as you can see, our sources of funds, this is something that we all discussed at the last meeting. Our three main sources of funds are the estimated beginning fund balance, the minimum guaranteed revenue, and the ASB stamp and activity stamp sales. And basically, how this works is the estimated beginning fund balance is the rollover from the previous years. All of that money goes back to the divisions. The minimum guaranteed revenue is funding that we receive from the bookstore, the cafeteria, and various different vendors on campus. And then you see the ASB stamp sale is actual ASG's funding. So this $60,000 is money that we're hoping to raise this year, and this is ASG's budget for the year. And then uses of funds, this hasn't changed much from the last presentation. And then we have our contingency allocation for anticipated mid-year requests and scholarships. So our contingency has remained about the same at $101,616, and so remained as an emergency reserve. And as you can see, our scholarships have risen to $106,334, including our new high school program, as well as the child development scholarships. And as I said during my last presentation, this number is a little bit misleading because it shows money that is directly given to students by ASG, whereas ASG also supports a variety of different programs and scholarships given out by the divisions. So this is scholarships strictly given by ASG, whereas there's a large amount of various other scholarships given by the divisions themselves. And in an effort to encourage early planning and full use of funds, the ASG summer budget committee did decide to allocate the allocation for anticipated mid-year requests at this point. So this $38,000 was lumped in with the new allocations in order to support new requests that had come forward and ensure that the divisions have time to fully plan their events and programs for the year, although the ASG senate is maintaining $6,000 that is able to be used by clubs and different student organizations. So as you can see, the budget has maintained basically the same structure with continued support for co-curricular programs and a main focus on scholarships. And I'll now take any questions you may have.
Okay. Trustee Lang.
Yes, first of all, thank you for a fine presentation. I think I probably missed the earlier presentation that you were there, so excuse me if I asked some questions that may have already been asked at that time. One comment that I do have, though, is unlike the IVC report that we'll have in a minute, I noticed that you did have headers, or they had headers in the different columns that showed the comparative fiscal years, and you can't really, that's absent from, I know, the Saddleback report, but I would find that helpful, I think. At least, I'm assuming that the first column is, when you get into the detail, is for 2009, 10, 1011, and 1112. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Just a, yeah, just editorial comment. I did have a question, though, about the, in each of the major categories, I noticed that you had a line item for rollover grants. Could you speak to that a little bit in terms of exactly what that is? Because that totals something approaching about $90,000, well, a little under $90,000. And then finally, I noticed there was a new allocation for student development office, campus life programs, and maybe you could tell us a little bit more about that as well.
Okay. So in the campus life program, were you speaking towards the $35,390?
No. That was 22,674. It was on Exhibit A, Page 6. It was on Exhibit A, Page 6. Towards the next line item from the bottom. Sorry, just a moment. Page 6.
You said it's line item 6?
No. Yeah, Exhibit A, Page 6. Second item from the bottom. Do you see where I'm at?
Yeah, second item from the bottom.
Student Development Office, Campus Life Program, 22674.
Yeah.
In, for this fiscal year that wasn't there for the prior two.
Basically, what this is, is our Student Development Program has recently, we're becoming independent. The ASG has the ASG events, and we do work very closely with Student Development Office. But Student Development Office has also created a new Campus Life series. If you see the blow-up furniture, the chessboard, and the different Connect Four things, basically different games going on on campus, and a lot of different programs they brought to write "Love on Her Arms" to Saddleback last year. I know that was a big success. It's a different, it's a service organization, and they're also planning on putting on many events this coming year, as well as during Welcome Week, they had a few local artists and food trucks, different things of that sort.
Okay. Thank you. Any other trustees?
And then the, I'm sorry. I also had a question about the rollover grants.
Yes. For the rollover grants, basically how it works is, we originally estimate the rollover. So the budget committee from last year, in being conservative and not wishing to allocate too much, and then having to go back and take back money that was previously allocated, anticipated at least $20,000. So the budget committee from this past year allocated $20,000, and then everything else that was rollover from the various divisions was received by the Student Development Office and ASG about a month ago. And then the Summer Budget Committee went through and allocated the new rollover number, which is the actual rollover from the 2010, 2011 year.
Okay. Is that all, trustee Lang? Yeah? Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. We're ready to vote on this budget. It's been moved and seconded, so please vote. Let's see. We're not in our vote mode yet. Oh, there we go. Okay. Sorry. Okay. And it carries unanimously with one being absent and a student advisory yes vote.
Thank you.
Well, now, thank you very much. We'll now move to the IVC ASG budget. And to present that, we have, I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Ezra Allen, the treasurer of ASIVC, and with me I have Sobel Pavelon, the Vice President of ASIVC.
All right. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, President Padberg, members of the board, Acting Chancellor Bouquet, President Rockamore, President Burnett, and governance group representatives. Tonight, we present to you the final revision of the ASIVC 2011-2012 budget. Thank you.
Okay. So the highlights of our changes are, namely, we have an increase in our beginning fund balance, mainly due to the rollover from last year's contingency and allocation for mid-year requests, seeing as we did not have very much in that section, as well as we had a higher revenue than expected from last year. And with having a higher beginning fund balance has allowed us to go back and grant funding to other requests that were made in areas that we were not allowed to grant money to in the tentative budget, such as campus life, student support, ASIVC operations, and more contingency mid-year requests and scholarships. Okay. So our beginning fund balance was $158,353, as I said, was mostly rollover from the previous year. And from our bookstore, we have a guaranteed revenue of $355,000 from the bookstore and $50,000 from the cafeteria. From that, we have to take away $98,732 for mainly, most of it goes to the ASIVC secretary, I believe, yes, for, because that is a, that's a fund that's not negotiable. Her salary is set. We're not allowed to negotiate it. So we just take that out before we attempt to allocate the rest of the funds. So the minimum guaranteed revenue comes to $464,621. From our ASB activity sticker sales, we have $40,000 coming in. And from the, from our Pepsi Commission bookstore and cafeteria, which is extra money that was not included in the contract, we have $89,732. So total sources of funds comes to $594,353. As you can see in our uses of funds, we have used pretty much all of it. Well, all of it, exactly. Not pretty much, all of it. So our campus life, which is mainly things like ASIVC events, the scholarship ceremony, not the scholarships, commencement, clubs, we have allocated $54,300 to. Our co-curricular programs remains unchanged from our tentative budget, which is, which are the, I guess, clubs in a, that were, count towards academia. I guess would be the best way to put it. From ASIVC operations, we have allocated $31,000, which is mainly things like office equipment supplies, the repairs that we may need in case one of us breaks a copier again. And our contingency mid-year requests and scholarships, we have allocated $202,32, which is broken down on the next page. And our student support, which is basically like Senior Day, our journalism section, the art gallery, theater, all that, has gone, has been allocated $74,701. So our contingency and emergency reserves, which has to be a minimum of 10%, we decided would be best to have exactly 10%, which comes to $59,435. And our allocation for anticipated mid-year requests, even though we didn't have a large amount of requests last year, we figured it might be a good idea to put a good amount of money just in case, because, you know, you never know. Well, because situations are different each year, so there is no way of telling what might happen this year because of what happened last year. And for our scholarship, we have added $7,000 from last time, from the tentative budget, up to $67,000. And we have, we, if the demand is high enough around time that we have scholarships coming in, we do have extra money that we can put into that fund. So the total from that is $202,32. Okay. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any trustees with questions? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget.
Move approval of this question.
Trustee Melchigh has moved approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Trustee Prendergast has seconded it. Please vote. All right. The matter is approved unanimously with one absent vote and one student advisory vote. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. We are now at 6.2, which is the adoption of the district final budget for 2011, 2012. And Deborah Fitzsimmons, our Vice Chancellor of Business Services, will present this item.
Good evening, Board President Padberg and Board of Trustees and members of the audience. You have before you the district's final budget packet for fiscal year 2011, 2012. For your review and approval this evening, the budget has been thoroughly reviewed by both the chancellor and myself, and it is conservatively based in a balanced budget, which is required by law. I want to recognize a few people before we start. District Director of Fiscal Services, Beth Muller. Also, both campus fiscal directors, I'm not sure if I see them, oh, yes, I do, Carol Hilton.
Could we ask the people to stand when you recognize them, Vice Chancellor?
Beth, would you stand? Okay, sure. Beth Muller, Carol Hilton, and Davide Kachat Chin. I want to say that the hard work that is done on the budget is primarily done with these three people. They work collaboratively, of course, with the college presidents and with the campus constituency groups, the DRAC Committee, as well as the college planning and budget committees. But I have to really say, I've never seen such a great fiscal team put together in one place, so we really have to commend these people. Whoops. All right. Here we go. Total budget for all funds is $555,008. If you turn to page 10 in your budget book, you can follow along with me. The majority, 91% of the general fund budget, $199.4 million, is, consists of unrestricted funds, while the remaining $20.7 million, 9% of the general fund budget, are restricted funds, for a total of other funds $335.8 million. I wanted to bring your attention that SB 361 portion is calculated at 64% of the unrestricted general fund budget, and that the amount is approximately a $500,000 increase over last year. I wanted to also remind you that the district does not receive state apportionment funding because local property taxes and student enrollment fees calculate to be higher than the calculation for state entitlement. Our remaining unrestricted income sources are made up of basic aid, 20%, non-resident tuition, 2%, lottery, 3%, and the beginning balance, which is the carryforward of prior year, which is 11% of the available unrestricted funds, $21.7 million. Revenue assumptions are based on the state budget, which is state COLA is at 0% and growth is at 0%. There will be workload reductions being applied to the community colleges, and it would reduce the funded FTS by a specific percentage for most community colleges in the state for this year, which accounts to about 6.2% decrease. The chancellor's office does not apply workload reductions to basic aid districts, so it's not taken into account into this budget assumptions. However, for comparative purposes, if we were under SB 361 right now, there'd be over $8 million just in this one category. Assumptions regarding property tax income is a key component of our budget planning. Income from property taxes are developed conservatively and in conjunction with working with Orange County Auditor's and Controller's Office. Right now, we're projecting tax revenue to be slightly lower or flat, and we've analyzed historical trends and compared those so that we're budgeting slightly lower than last year. Secure taxes, for instance, are budgeted to be lower at approximately 1.39% lower than last year, unsecured are budgeted at lower amount of 3.5%. Enrollment fees increased from $26 to $36 per unit this year, which is approximately a 38% increase. And I'd like to note that this may increase further to $46 per unit if state revenue forecasts are not met by December. If you refer to pages 12 through 14 in your budget book, you can see that the contingency reserve is calculated at 7.5% in accordance with the budget development guidelines that were approved by the board. For the expenditures, the salaries and benefit account for about 85% to 89% of the expenses at the colleges and 81% at district services. These percentages are still within an acceptable range. Some of the details of the budget assumptions associated with general fund salaries and expenses include 5% estimated increase in health and welfare benefits, PERS budgeted at 10.9%, STIRS at 8.25%, increase in unemployment insurance up to 1.61%, and no salary increases were included in this budget for any of the employee groups. Workers' compensation rates increased slightly to 1.8%, and we are also making our first payment of $1.08 million for the fiscal year 2010-2011 faculty early retirement program, which is estimated to provide salary savings of $3.98 million over five years. The state is eliminating our excess PFE that we received. It will be a 50% reduction this year of $1.8 million and totally eliminated next year. Our budget strategy for these one-time continuing funds was conservative. We had placed this in the basic aid fund and was used for one-time purposes, so this, thankfully, the reduction will not impact continuing base budget operations. And then to support district-wide strategic planning, which will be institutionalized and be an ongoing activity, we've added $20,000 for that purpose. This slide shows the history for basic aid, and it's good to see the trends. And you can see the basic aid information in your packet on pages 15 and 16. You can see that the trends have gone up and down over the years, which is why the philosophy of using these funds for one-time purposes has been extremely wise. The basic aid budget for the final budget is $43 million because it includes a carryforward uncommitted balance of approximately $3.9 million. Out of basic aid funds, $2.6 million will be transferred to cover the annual accrual for current employees' future retirement benefits. $75,000 is for basic aid advocacy, and the remaining dollars are for future projects. All of the previously committed projects funded through basic aid are also listed in the budget packet on pages 16 and 17. The allocations and breakdown of the general fund between the unrestricted and restricted funds and the colleges and the other major areas are listed out on page 18. For state categorical funding, we're budgeting at approximately 95% of fiscal year 2010-2011 budgeted levels to be conservative. And you may have heard that the state chancellor's office did not allow any of the unused funds, the remaining from the majority of the categorical programs, to be rolled over this year, and this is a change from the more recent practice of allowing these rollovers. So you can see that this is another negative impact to the colleges for these programs and services. Categoricals are one area which the state chancellor's office has been able to cut basic aid's funding, so these programs continue to be vulnerable for us. Funds 71 and 72 are budgeted for retiree benefits, premiums and the retiree benefit trust, which is an irrevocable trust. And this is to ensure that we're fully funded, our OPEB obligation in accordance to GASB 43 and 45. And you can see these amounts on the table on page 28 in the columns on the farther right side, with the total funding equaling $69.9 million. Looking ahead to this year, you may be wondering, how will the state budget situation impact us here at SOCCCD? If revenue projections at the state are not met by December, which at this point in time it looks likely they will not be met, then three levels of increasing tiers of budget reductions would be triggered for the California community colleges. At the state chancellor's budget workshop, when discussing this possibility, several questions were raised for other districts about why basic aid districts were not experiencing cuts like we were experiencing. I could only say that it is not business as usual anymore. We are much more vulnerable. One area we are most vulnerable is our categoricals, and this is an area where the state chancellor's office has previously cut basic aid. What is the impact of this year's budget to the colleges and district services? Well, needless to say, there's been budget pressures on the district services and the colleges. We are entering our fourth consecutive year of no COLA, but continuing cost increases, including salary and benefit increases, and this has been very challenging. Having said that, I want to emphasize that we are continuing to make prudent budget decisions, and we are achieving greater operational efficiencies so that we can fulfill the goal of serving our students and provide them with excellent service and instruction. Also looking ahead, the state chancellor's office is preparing their state budget request for next year. They have three major priorities, which are categorical restorations, COLA, and growth. I want to point out that the growth will be in the form of restoration for those who experience reductions. It will not be new growth money. What that means is that it is highly unlikely we will get any of this growth money if there was growth money. In addition to the three major priorities, they are also asking for one-time dollars for instructional equipment and scheduled maintenance. Since the state budget request is a whopping total of $1.5 billion, if you can include all of this, it is hard to tell how much and what may be funded for next year at this early stage. I want to finish this presentation by sharing that as a result of accreditation strategic planning efforts, we will be continuously striving to link our planning to our budget and our allocations. We hope to get better and better at doing this. We also have included some additional information in the traditional budget packet, which includes the resources allocation flow chart, which is located on page four, and in Appendix A, B, we have a definition of term sheet and a funds table. The appendixes begin on page 21. We hope that the additional information will be helpful to you and also to anyone who is looking at our budget-making information more... experience reductions, it will not be new growth money. What that means is that it is highly unlikely we will get any of this growth money if there was growth money. In addition to the three major priorities, they are also asking for one-time dollars for instructional equipment and scheduled maintenance. Since the state budget request is a whopping total of 1.5 billion dollars, if you can include all of this, it is hard to tell how much and what may be funded for next year at this early stage. I want to finish this presentation by sharing that as a result of accreditation and strategic planning efforts, we'll be continuously striving to link our planning to our budget and our allocations. We hope to get better and better at doing this. We also have included some additional information in your traditional budget packet, which includes the resources allocation flow chart, which is located on page four, and in appendixes A and B, we have a definition of term sheet and a funds table. The appendixes begin on page 21. We hope that the additional information will be helpful to you and also to anyone who is looking at our budget, making information more open, transparent, and easier to understand. That's the end of my overview of the final budget for fiscal year 2011-2012. I want to thank you for allowing me to present this budget to you this evening, and if you have any questions or comments, both Beth Mueller and I are here to answer them.
Thank you. Trustee Pendergast has a question.
No question, I'm just going to move.
Oh, do you want to move the budget? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Meldau seconded. Trustee Lang has a question.
Yes, just a quick question. First of all, I want to congratulate you for the additions that you made to the budget, which I thought was very helpful in terms of some of the charts and verbiage and other explanation that you provided, that definitely enhanced, for me at least, I think, the presentation. One clarification, though, that I was interested in is you had indicated that as a basic aid district, we were particularly vulnerable for some of the categorical funds, and specifically mentioned here, the Partnership for Excellence program. Is it correct, then, that that's a cut that we experience as a basic aid district that other districts, that our basic aid district would not have?
Yes. I don't know if you know the history of the SB 361, when it came into fruition in the year 2004, 2005 fiscal year. What happened was the PFE funds at that time were rolled into SB 361 dollars. So what we actually got was excess PFE. We went back, and there was one-time legislation that provided the basic aid districts excess PFE dollars, and for us, it was about 3.7, 3.8 million dollars. So we basically had these additional funds, and it was good while it lasted, basically, but we knew they were vulnerable this whole time, so it was something that we were continuing to get since that year.
So I guess my follow-up question to that would be, is I'm assuming that this program is still ongoing, that there are still program goals and objectives that we are mandated to meet, it's just that we need to expend basic aid dollars in order to do that? Would that be a fair statement?
I don't know how to say this, but basically, the PFE requirements, as far as the goals, basically went away when it got rolled into SB 361. So we were basically getting the dollars without having to meet the original intent of PFE.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Hey, trustee Melchiker.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I thought it was really excellent and really clear and budget, and I really appreciate that, and I appreciate the extra charts and guidelines, and I also appreciate the fact that the chancellor has mentioned with this new strategic planning that we were somewhat forced to do, it's been a very excellent, his feeling was, and you mentioning it too, that it was a very excellent exercise to have to go through. And as you mentioned, now our budget is completely open, and everyone can look at it, and everyone can see that there's no hidden money, and it's all there for everyone to see, and I just am delighted to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. And also with the addition of the basic aid policy and administrative regulation, I think that everything's going to be much more better for the district as we move forward.
Okay, do I have any other trustees wishing to speak? Okay, with that, let's vote on the item. All right, matter carries unanimously with one absent vote and a student advisory yes vote. Thank you very much. We're now at item 6.3, which is a donation of Saddleback College memorabilia to the Ronald Reagan Library.
Second.
Is there a motion and a second?
Good presentation.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees. Before I begin tonight, I would like to give you a background of what led to all this. What was the inspiration for the presentation I'm going to make for you tonight? Well, first presentation actually is all of you. It's our current Board of Trustees and the many Board of Trustees going back in the history of Saddleback College in this district. The second inspiration is, actually, we have a special guest with us here tonight. Some of you may know her, some of you may not. We have a wonderful family member of our Saddleback College family who serves on our Board of Governors for our foundation, also is instrumental with our Vets program, and that's Ms. Joyce Van Chack. And her daughter Dana is with here tonight as well, and I'm going to have her come up in a minute to make a couple comments as well. But a little bit about Joyce, she actually was a Ronald Reagan appointee, served in the administration, was on even his advance team back then. So we're very proud of Joyce, and she's very proud of the president, just like we all are. The third inspiration for this was because when we started looking around in our archives and around our campus and district, trying to find where all this stuff is that we have, which some of the stuff I'm going to show you in a minute, we couldn't find it. It was kept in different places. We found some of it was thrown away, we found some of it is missing, and we said, that's just not right. This is very important history for our college, for our community, for our district, and frankly, for our state and country, and certainly for the president's memory. So with that said, I want to just give you a little bit of history real quick about Ronald Reagan and Saddleback College in our district. First, if you recall, back in 1968, then-Governor Reagan dedicated Saddleback College. And as you recall, one of his famous quotes, "We are here to dedicate something more than just another college, we are here to dedicate an institution of opportunity and fulfillment." And then, and then here's some wonderful pictures of him attending, we obviously, we're a college town, Mission Viejo Reporter, a famous newspaper, and fortunately, one of the things that actually we think we lost, which is quite unfortunate, is the original papers back then. Interesting enough, that back in 1970, Governor Ronald Reagan at that time issued us another letter, basically congratulating the college on the dedication of our new campus, as you can see right here, and we do have that original letter. We have another letter from then-President Ronald Reagan back in 1986, who is congratulating us on our 20th anniversary at the time. Don't look at the date, I know there's somewhat of a discrepancy there, but nonetheless, he congratulated us on our 20th anniversary. And then also, oops, I'm sorry, I made a big error here. We have a wonderful video that you may all recall. That's not working.
As governor of California in 1968, it was my privilege to dedicate the new Saddleback College campus in Mission Viejo. I'm proud to say that since that time, Saddleback College has distinguished itself as an outstanding educational institution with first-rate instruction and state-of-the-art facilities. To the faculty, staff, and students of Saddleback College, my congratulations on 25 years of excellence.
That's very special. And that was for our 20th anniversary, obviously. And then on October 27, 2008, most of the board members up here officially actually named this Board of Trustees, Ronald Reagan Board of Trustees room. And obviously, you see even a trustee, one of our trustees donated a fine bust of Ronald Reagan. We have many more things, but one thing I'd like to do, one of the quotes that Governor Reagan said back in 1968 said is, "It is the function of education to help each individual grow to the maximum extent of his capabilities, to help him fulfill his great potential, and it is our job as responsible citizens to provide that opportunity. That this community has decided to move ahead in providing this opportunity is an action which I commend and an action which will provide great rewards for the community." Well, trustees and Madam President, we believe that we can further honor and preserve the long history of our college with President Ronald Reagan by donating original and copied documents to the Ronald Reagan Library and Museum on behalf of our college, our district, and our Board of Trustees, and we would ask for you for approval of that. And with that, I would like to bring up, if it's okay, Joyce Van Chack, to maybe just say a couple words, since she is such an esteemed member of our family and in the Ronald Reagan family as well. Thank you, Joyce.
Have all of you seen that little mouse running around here? I thought it was going to go up your leg.
Oh, my goodness.
And I'm next.
Oh, you're kidding. There's a mouse?
Well, that's interesting.
We need a little humor now and then, anyway, right? With these gals, all of us were sitting here just kind of ignoring whether to move our legs or not.
We may have to take a break.
It was really nice of them to warn you, too.
Right. That's better than in the theater where we have baby rabbits running around, but that's okay. Yes, we've had that.
Kate, good evening, all of you. So nice to be here, and it's such a thrill to watch all of you on television, which we do all the time at home, and I appreciate all you do. It's a wonderful school. I taught 20 years within the LA system, and it's nothing compared to yours down here, believe me. I did want to tell you that Reagan would have been very, very proud of the school and what you've all done. He really believed in education, and he really appreciated all you did. Not only that, but I know he would have appreciated your veterans program here, because he was very, very strong for veterans and your memorial. I would like to share with you that the Valley Forge National Freedom Foundation has awarded you, for your wonderful veterans memorial, a National George Washington Award, which you'll be receiving probably in October. Another thing I wanted to share with you, and I have been volunteering up at the Veterans Center, and I just have to tell you, Todd, what you have done and everyone here for the veterans is just unbelievable. I sit in the back and type and listen to all the veterans, and they talk about the things that have happened, and it's so wonderful. They have a place to share with each other, and all of you professors and everyone that works with them, bless you, because they really need your help. We have something exciting coming up, September 16th. Do anybody know what that day is, other than it's a three-day holiday? Do you know?
Constitution.
Constitution Day, and by law, all federal employees and all schools are supposed to do something for Constitution Day. And Todd has approved that we bring 700 high school students here from Orange County to work with the Orange County School District, the Orange County Courts, and we'll have a morning here with all these students. So you might want to stay away on September 16th. Heaven knows, and I taught in junior high and high school, heaven knows what it'll be like, but 700 young people will be on this campus, and hopefully, we'll get some of them to come to your school. And it's wonderful that you're going to have a high school scholarship coming up. I did want to tell you, too, that I am a member of your emeritus program, and would you believe, this is the first semester that I was turned down for an aerobics class? Can you believe you have too many people here in your emeritus programs? And I do think they should all be paying something. I think it's a real free ride for a lot of people here. Our Board of Trustees is working hard, and it's so much fun to work with them, they're a wonderful group of folks, and they're working so hard for, I think, a lot of your programs, but mainly for Todd's stadium that's going to come here one day, right? Well, Todd's the one working on us raising the money for that, so bless you.
Isn't she a gem, folks?
Yes.
Anyway, I wanted to, thank you. And thank you, Dana, wonderful daughter. Anyway, I brought some copies of some of the things. There's so many things, we have board resolutions we've received, there are copies of documents that go back, there are even mail grams from the governor and the president at the time, so, and old pictures. So I thought I'd just bring them for you to receive as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to, if you could just stay there for just a minute to answer any questions. I think this is very interesting, and it would give Saddleback a lot of public recognition to have some of these items in the Reagan Library, but I am concerned, because of the way this is recommended, it says various memorabilia, and that's just too general for me. I would like to see if we could have maybe a committee from the board work with you and someone who else you would designate to look at those and to come back to us with specifics. We're in the process of developing a special Reagan display ourselves to include this bust, and while we may want to keep some of the originals, we definitely would want to keep a copy of everything. So I think it's a worthy project, but I just find it a little bit too nebulous right now to support. So I'm wondering if with that, I could make a motion or entertain a motion to table this so that we could come back next meeting. I don't want it delayed necessarily. I think that we could have a subcommittee of the board work with you on this and come back with something specific that would support our own Reagan display here.
I have no problem with that, Madam President. In fact, if you want, I have no problem. First of all, most of the stuff is copies, anyway. We have copies of everything. We would keep copies literally of everything, and we already have it, digital and hard copies. Second, the stuff we do have original, I have no problem, just even if the board doesn't mind, if you could just approve, and we'll just bring the list to you, and you can approve of what you'd like to send and whatnot. Either regardless, we're at least going to send the copies, so...
Right, but I do think for us to support it, it should be specific. This is just too nebulous. So with that, is there a second to my motion? Trustee? All right, there's a support of the motion to table, and that does take precedence, but we would table it to the next meeting so that it doesn't get delayed unnecessarily or lost for that purpose. So a motion to table does take precedence. I'm sorry, trustee Melchiker, I know you wanted to speak. So could we please vote on the motion to table to the next meeting? Trustee J. All right, there's one no vote from trustee Melchiker, and the rest are yes, so the motion passes. We will have it back at the next meeting with more specifics, and I'll be happy to work with you. Anyone else from the board would like to support and work on that? Just Melchiker? No? Okay, I guess I'm in. All right, thank you very much. Go to 6.4, and that is to Saddleback College to hire an architect for the renovation of the Technology and Applied Science Building, similar to what we did with the library. Right, a motion and a second. Any comments? Do we have a presentation here from nobody? Okay, so I, so you know, trustee Melchiker, did you want to speak on this?
No, I wanted to speak on the last one.
All right. So let's vote on that item. Thank you. Oh, she's got to get us set again. Hold on, she's working with her mouse. Maybe the mouse on the floor can help you. Trustee, trustee Melchiker, you need to vote. Okay, all right, the matter carries unanimously with one absent and one student advisory vote. 6.5 is, again, the James B. Ut Memorial Learning Resource Center in the library that has just been renovated. And this is a recommendation for the Board of Trustees to approve a change order request for this renovation, and the revised contract amount is there, as well as an increase for the total project of $324,914. Any motion by trustee J? Do I hear a second? Second by trustee Lang. All right, any comments or questions? Let's vote on the item. All right, matter carries unanimously with one absent and one student advisory vote. 6.7, this is a Saddleback College pool deck replacement change order, and this is an increase of $24,852. This happens frequently with our contracts, as they get into things, there's something that has to be revised. Any comments or questions? And do I have a motion?
You said 6.7, not 6.7.
Pardon? I'm sorry, 6.6, it is correct, 6.6, not 6.7. Do I hear a motion? Trustee Lang and trustee Meldau second. All right, let's vote on the item. Trustee Pendergast, you need to vote? All right, matter carries unanimously with one absent and one student advisory vote. Now we're at 6.7. Saddleback College proposed division name, and this is to change or a permanent division name change from liberal arts and learning resources to liberal arts. Okay, moved by trustee Lang and seconded by trustee Melchiker. Any comments or questions? Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously with one absent and one student advisory vote. Next item, 6.8, is the Irvine Valley College basic aid funding reallocation of 2.7 million from the Business Science and Technology Innovation Project to the Fine Arts Project. Chancellor recommends that we approve this reallocation of money to the Fine Arts Project. Any comments from our administration or no one? No? All right, trustee J, move the item.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Melchiker. Let's vote. Matter carries unanimously with one absent and one student advisory vote. We are now on, we are now on 6.9, which is the board policy revisions.
Move approval.
Moved by trustee Melchiker, seconded by trustee Meldau. And this is for several policies that are here in front of you. So there's one basic aid funds allocation process, 3110, and then...
Is that a motion for approval? No, a motion for approval. This is the second time we've seen these.
Yes, these have been, gone out to our shared governance and have come back with the following changes. So, okay? Any questions? No, let's vote on the item then. All right, carries unanimously with one absent and one student advisory vote. All right, carries unanimously with one absent and one student advisory vote. Next item are, the first time we're seeing these, Board Policy Revisions, so these are recommended for review and study. Trustee Lang has made the motion.
I second that.
Seconded by Trustee Melchiker. Let's vote on the item. Trustee J, Meldow and Melchiker need to vote? All right, matter carries unanimously with one advisory and one absent. All right, and we are now at 6.11. This is to authorize administrative, administration for Section 1.125, Flexible Spending Account Benefits. All right, can we ask our acting chancellor to explain this? Question, we'll get to you. Oh, go ahead, Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons.
Actually, I was trying to raise my hand for 6.10. I wanted to point out that on 6.10...
Sorry, we have to clarify for the public that we're going back to 6.10 that we just approved. What is it that you wanted to point out?
BP 4020 was incorrectly stated there. It was already presented before the board last month for discussion and approval, I mean, for review and study, and also you approved it in 6.9. So that should have been struck out.
Oh dear, okay.
BP 4020, Designate Administrators and Classified Managers.
4020?
Yes.
So... Second Exhibit B.
Yes.
All right, so I think we probably need to revote on that item. So with that correction, we will then revote on this particular item, 6.10, recognizing that 4020 is not a part of it, so that would be B taken out of it. Does everyone understand what we did? All right. Moved by Dave Lang and Trustee J seconded it. Let's vote on the item. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, carries unanimously with one absent and one advisory vote. Now we're at 6.11, the Flexible Spending Accounts Benefits Plan. That's been moved and seconded, and do we need some explanation about this? This is to dependent care and medical care reimbursements?
Basically, what the Health and Welfare Committee recommended, and we're presenting to you for your approval, is to move, change vendors for the FSA plan, which is our, basically, the flexible spending account. There is no change to the benefit to the employees, except that the new vendor will be offering improved service to the employees, such as having a debit card that they could take to the store or to the, and purchase instead of having to pay out of pocket and then get reimbursed. Also, this new vendor has improved customer service online, you could check your accounts, things like that. It also will be a cost savings to the district of about $17,000.
Okay.
So we recommend, and because this is run through CISC, which is a JPA...
Right.
I don't know if you recall with the Blue Shield, they require a resolution for the board for approval for it.
Okay. All right, so do we need to have a roll call vote on this? Yes. If it's a resolution, we should have a roll call. We have a motion and a second on this, I believe, don't we? Or I'm lost?
Yes.
We do, okay. Yeah, you and Jay. So with you? I'm sorry.
We just need to call the roll.
We just need to call the roll. So we'll let Ms. Garcia do that.
Trustee J?
Aye.
Trustee Lang?
Aye.
Trustee Meldow?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Patberg?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
And Trustee Larson?
Aye.
Now, may I ask who first, who made the motion and who seconded?
It was, I believe it was Trustee Lang and then Trustee J. Am I correct?
No, that was on the...
No, okay. Who made this one? Who moved this one, please?
I didn't. I don't think anyone did.
All right, could I have a motion and a second, please? I mean, we've already voted. Trustee Lang and Trustee Melchiker, I heard first. All right, I think we're fine. Since we did a roll call, it's pretty specific that everybody wanted to vote on the item. All right, 6.12 is an interesting item, and we'll let our vice chan, or our acting chancellor, Mr. David Bouquet, present this.
On this item, I apologize, there's three corrections to this overall, and my apologies for that. On the very first page of Item 6.12, this would be not four categorically funded positions in the first line of background, but five. And then on Exhibit A of the next page, the line where it says number of positions, one job classification, so on, underneath the signed time, this would be 11 months out of the year. And then on the Exhibit B, on the first line, it's a senior laboratory technician, it's not 40 hours a week, but 20 hours a week, since half of them are funded by the General Fund. And let me provide the Board of Trustees a word of explanation on this item. All five of these positions are funded by a National Science Foundation grant, and the grant has been submitted. We have verbally heard that it's been approved, but literally they claim the check is in the mail. So we're faced with, we have to have an action, and if indeed we do receive the funding for these positions, then they'll actually be taken on this item. But in the meantime, at this point, we do not have any funding formally allocated to us from the National Science Foundation.
All right, so what I understand we need to do is, we will vote on all of these resolutions. We've actually been distributing the resolutions for signatures, but if we can do that, do you think that's going to be legal, or should we vote separately on each one of these resolutions?
But this is presented as one resolution.
One package? All right, so it will be a roll call vote then?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, do I have a motion and a second? I believe so. Trustee J and Trustee Lang, seconded, okay.
Trustee J?
Aye.
Trustee Lang?
Aye.
Trustee Meldow?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Patberg?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
And Trustee Larson?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Carries unanimously. Next is 6.13, Academic Personnel Actions. We'll let Vice Chancellor Bouquet present this, or Acting Chancellor.
We'd like to recommend it as presented. No changes.
Okay, no changes to this item? Do I hear a motion?
I have a...
Move approval.
All right, Trustee Melchiker, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Meldow. Any comments or questions?
Yes.
Yes, Trustee Lang.
Thank you. Just one small clarification on D1A.
B or D?
No, D.
D1A.
D1A. It said, the end of that says "assignment ended effective August 5, 2001", and I think that's supposed to be "begins", if it's an administrative employment.
In this case, Bill Kelly was an acting dean until that point, and now he's left that position effective August 5th, and we heard a full-time replacement to replace him. Now, we also see another part in here, we're going to bring him back as a consultant at a lesser salary level to work on board policies with us.
Okay, all right.
That's probably the confusion.
Yep, I was confused. No question about it.
Did anyone else have a comment or question? All right, let's vote on the item. Oh, is this roll call? No, go ahead, regular vote. All right, carries unanimously with one absent and one student advisory vote. 6.14, Classified Personal Actions.
We'd like to recommend this as presented, but no changes.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Trustee Prendergast, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Melchiker. Any questions or comments? Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously with one absent and one student advisory vote. Very good. We are now at 7.1, and this is, these are our information items. Do we have any comments or corrections to this? This has to do with outside speakers invited to Saddleback College. Okay. 7.2 is Confirmation of Dissolution of the Nonprofit Corporation Information. No comments or questions. 7.3, the Development of the Districtwide, we already did that one, we don't have to do that one. All right, 7.4, Basic Aid Report, comments or questions? 7.5, Facilities Plan Status Report, comments or questions? 7.6 is the Quarterly Financial Status Report, comments or questions? 7.7 is the Quarterly Investment Report. No comments or questions? And do we have a 7.8? 7.8 is the Transfer of Appropriations at the Close of the Fiscal Year. Comments or questions? All right, very good. We are at 8.0, and these are our reports from our constituent groups, so we'll start over here. And Dan Walsh?
Hard to see. In the interest of the time, I'll be brief.
Could you just speak, speak your title, because I can't see it there.
Saddleback College Academic Senate President.
Thank you.
In the interest of the time, I'll be brief. Just that we did complete a successful flex week, and the early reporting is that we already have over 3,000, oh, sorry, almost 3,000 hours of professional development time reported by faculty, and we're in the second week of classes.
Okay, thank you. And President of our Faculty Association, Louis Long?
I have no report this evening.
Okay, very good. And Lisa Davis Allen, you are going to represent Irvine Valley College Academic Senate.
I have just a few brief comments. The Academic Senate Rep Council meets for the first time this fall for the academic year of 11-12 on the first, this coming Thursday. And just to mention, we have finalized both our IVC to IVC lecture series for the 11-12 year, and they will range from business to history, technology, and then our final one in the spring of 2012 will be on politics as we all get ready for that wonderful campaign season that we all look so forward to. We also, I just wanted to let you know that September 22, 2011, which is a Thursday evening at 7:00 PM in the PAC, we will also have our first of this year's three distinguished academic lectures with Dr. Robert Young, who's Professor of Geography and Urban Planning at CSU Fullerton. He's also the Assistant VP of Graduate Programs and Research, Emeritus. He's going to be presenting an academic lecture on Paradise at Middle Age, Exploring the Real Orange Counties. So my first question to him will be, what's middle age? Right? So, we're really looking forward to it. We think we're going to have a good season this year in our lecture series that are, of course, the IVC. The IVC is sponsored solely by the Senate, and the DAOs is sponsored collaboratively between the Academic Senate and Student Government. And then, of course, finally, I'd just like to say that that bright young man with the nervous laugh who presented IVC's budget this year is my youngest son.
Oh!
I just had to throw that in. But he does have the nervous laugh.
Probably if you weren't in the room, it wouldn't have happened that way. All right, and our Associate Vice Chancellor of Economic Development, Randy Peoples.
Thank you. No additional report tonight, thank you.
All right, and IVC President, Glenn Rockwell.
Yes, thank you very much. I will let most of my written reports stand, but I would like to draw your attention to a couple of things. One of particular interest is Bill Atkins, one of our faculty members in Digital Media Arts, was selected out of 300 entries to be the winner of the new whale tail design on the ECO license plates. And so that was quite an honor.
Yeah.
It led to a $1,000 award for him. The second thing in the report is, I wanted to make sure that everyone remembers that we're holding the commemoration of the 10th 9/11 event Friday, September 9th, in our PAC. And it's from 12 to 12:30. It's a short ceremony for those that have been there before. And our very own District, South Orange County Community College District President, Nancy Patberg, will be offering remarks on behalf of the board. And we also have, it's really focusing on first responders, so we have Chief Dave Maggard from the Irvine Police Department, we have Orange County Sheriff Sandra Hutchins, and we also have the Irvine Division Chief of the Orange County Fire Authority, Michael Moore, speaking. And so again, honoring those folks and their roles. So I don't go on too long, you have packets on your desk there, and inside, there's a lot of information that you don't want me to spend talking about right now, but take a look. We have the new brochure for our fifth season in the Performing Arts Center, which is the 2011-2012 performances. So check that out, let me know if you would like to come, and I'll make sure that there will be space available for you. Finally, Bill, our growth is flat, and our lots are full, but the growth is flat. And the reason for that is last year, we were running about 3% of unfunded growth and needed to bring that down level so that we could provide better services for them. Apparently, there's no impact on the increase in fees because the productivity values are actually quite high. 525 is a state index, and most colleges are below 525. Will likely be up to 540 or perhaps 560 by the time things settle down a bit.
What's total FTEs?
The total FTEs? We're just above 9,000.
9,000.
Yeah, really approaching 10,000. We're just right below the 10,000 mark, actually, right at this given moment.
All right, thank you. And President Burnett from Saddleback College?
Thank you. First, it's been a wonderful first semester, and we've been talking that it actually relatively was very smooth. Thank you to our IT, our wonderful student support services, our faculty and everybody else. And Bill, in answer to your question, like Glenn just answered, we are actually up a little bit. We're about 2.4% up in our head count and about 1% in our FTEs. And the good point, once, as Glenn mentioned, we also, our productivity, of course, is up, so the cost to do that. So once again, that's a thanks to our deans and our faculty who are actually catering to more of our students and our, the classes, existing classes that we offer. I would like to point out a few things, and I gave a gazillion packets because it's the free getting of the semester for you, so you have all kinds of stuff, but also in September, we're having our 9/11 ceremony on Thursday, the 8th. Fortune's at a different time, after yours, it's at 4:00 PM. And then immediately following is what March had already mentioned, I'm sorry, Trustee Melchiker had mentioned, is the Chili Bowl Cook-Off. So thank you for the plug, but that's immediately after the 9/11 ceremony. I want to point that I have my annual State of the College Breakfast on Friday, September 23rd. I encourage you to come with many other people from the community that will be there. Tony Lipold would kill me if I didn't mention that you have your annual athletic semester package here of all your tickets and entrances and schedules and all that stuff for all the various athletic events that we have. First football game is actually this Saturday against OCC at 6:00 PM for Todd's...
It's a home game?
To play at Todd Stadium.
[laughing].
It's not Todd Stadium. By the way, it's an athletic stadium. Soccer and Chuck and Field would not be happy. Also, we're very pleased we gave you the annual, the new catalog and the new student handbook. I thought you'd like that for yourselves and your family and friends. With that said, we look forward to having a wonderful new semester with all of you. And once again, thanks to our faculty, staff and management.
Okay, thank you very much. Vice Chancellor, Premier Chief Technology?
I'll mention one item. The mobile apps for Saddleback and IVC, we've just updated the iOS ones, and if you're an Android phone or tablet user, we've just released the Android apps. They're available for free in the Android marketplace.
Thank you very much. All right, and our Vice Chancellor of Human Services, Debra Finns-Simmons.
No additional report for tonight.
All right, very good. And now we are at Irvine Valley College Academic Senate? I'm sorry, Classified Senate?
Yeah, already.
Oh, he had to go. Okay, so Saddleback College, Classified Senate? Don Minial?
Hi, I'm Don, and this is the second week in school. Of course, in Service Week, a lot of the classified are busy servicing students, so we don't get to participate as much. But we are planning our yearly off-campus event, which is Classified Day, which involves all three entities, Irvine Valley, Saddleback and the District. And we're looking forward to that planning and that educational opportunities. We have a record number of people using our labs, especially since the library's still labs, especially since the library is still down, and students are desperately looking for locations to study and to use computers. A lot of, some of the computers are not up to date, so there's a lot of translation involved and actually changing versions and getting the students so they know what they're doing. And unfortunately, there's not much hiring that has happened. So a lot of our positions that already left, like, let's say, May or even March of this year, are still slow.
Eighteen, right.
Yeah. So a lot of those students are really kind of, unfortunately, are not being served because we just don't have the, the people there to help them. So looking forward to actually seeing a plan for the hiring and bringing back those positions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. IVC President, Shu Dixie.
Currently, we are just still into our IVC contract negotiations, and that's going pretty well, don't you think, Dr. Bouquet?
[laughing]
We think so, too. Thank you.
Okay, and Joseph Hasse, for our ASG President of Saddleback College. I've already heard from you today, but go ahead.
So I give a couple more things. I just wanted to let you know, we did have our ASG Training Retreat and Orientations. That was the first time that all of the new members got to meet each other and got to get an idea of what ASG is. And then also, as we talked about earlier, we had Welcome Week last week with student outreach, and a few, a few divisions helped out. We had different performers and different food trucks on campus, things like that. Our first branch meetings were last week, so all of our new members had their first meeting last week. And we've been working on our new scholarship program that was mentioned earlier. And I also just wanted to let you know, our two upcoming events are the Blood Drive, which is on the 27th and 28th, so if any of you would like to donate. It's 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then also, our Homecoming Pregame Activities on September 4 from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. So you did just get your tickets for the year, so if you want to stop by, we'll have our pregame activities from 4:00 to 6:00.
Okay, thank you. And our IVC ASG President, Natasha Nguyen.
Um, last week, we had our Welcome Week, and that was pretty good, too. And tomorrow, we're going to have our first ASIVC meeting, and that's practically it for me.
All right, thank you very much. And I think we are at the end of our meeting. If anyone is objecting, we'll, we'll adjourn. Otherwise, we'll continue. All right, thank you, everyone.